Good evening and welcome to the Brookfield Board of Selectmen's Meeting of Tuesday, July 11, 2017. Would you raise, would you rise and join in?
I propose to introduce the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands on mission, under God, universal, for liberty and justice for all.
I would like to take a motion to approve a warrant from 6/117 for $556.80. Approve an expense warrant, 6/2017, $15,999.97. Ratify a payroll warrant, 6/2917, $265,763.20. Ratify a payroll warrant, 6/2917, for $40,520.40. Approve an expense warrant for 6/3017, for $6,591.20. Approve an expense warrant for 7/117, for $247,043. And approve the school assessment payment, number 6, for $2,063,865. And I would also like to approve so many, 6/1217, 6/27, 17, 79. And I would like to approve limits from the other departments, the five minutes from June 2017. The emergency squad monthly report from June 2017. And then I have here, we have a couple of anniversaries of five parties. Stephen Watten, who has given 36 years to the town. Matthew Graves, 18 years. I'd like to congratulate them for their public service in the town. And emergency squad, we have Paramedic John Lennon, who's been with us 9 years. So I'd like to congratulate all of them and thank them for giving services for the town. Now our next is public access. Do we have anybody here for public access, Christine?
How we doing? How many seasonal workers do we have in this town right now? Highway boss is here. Can he answer that question? I saw two guys, two guys, one seasonal worker that I know of, and I saw another new guy.
So we have a core fundamental budget for seasonal workers, that is in terms of dollars, not in terms of positions.
Six months, six months.
No, in terms of dollars, not of positions.
But how many?
Based on six months, 40 hours.
How many seasonal workers do we have? And I saw four guys cutting grass. I mean, we were supposed to get one seasonal worker so the highway department can get their work done. I saw one guy cutting and the other three standing there down in South Pond about two weeks ago.
I know one of the gentlemen that has been mowing the lawns is one of these ones that's doing it, he's doing a tax write-off.
Yeah, the veterans, veterans' work off. I think perhaps two of them are, but at the end of the day, and I got at least one of them is work off, at the end of the day, the seasonal worker is budgeted against dollars.
Yes, I was on the advisory board, Beth, I know.
If we don't have somebody that can work 40 hours and it takes two people 20 hours to get the work done, then that's what happens. So you don't need to worry about how many individuals are hired against a particular budget, as long as that budget isn't overspent. It's really of no concern as long as the work gets done and it doesn't exceed the budget.
Okay, well, like I said, I'm gonna go back. Your propaganda is well taken, as usual. I saw three, three guys down in South Pond. One guy was cutting and two were standing there. I mean, how many guys we need cutting grass in our town here? We're supposed to have one seasonal worker take care of the lawns. Because as our highway boss said, he's too valuable. He was one of the people down in South Pond cutting the grass. So what's, what's up? I mean, what are we getting done in, in the town here is what I wanna know. Where's the management?
That's a different question. So first of all, what's getting done is a different question than how many.
Okay, but let's, well, let me ask you, why do we have two, three guys out there cutting grass? When there's so much to be, there's so much, we don't have time, there's so much to be done. Why do we got the whole crew out there cutting grass?
Mr. Chaffey, would you like to answer that question?
Well, first of all, I'd like him to answer the question for me. All right. The three people standing there, Mr. John David Holcraft.
You. You were one of them, and then there was a seasonal worker standing there, and one other seasonal worker was actually doing the work.
Oh, well, guess what?
That's the answer.
There was one seasonal worker standing there doing the work with a full-time person from the highway department.
Two.
John David Holcraft.
Two guys standing there. You were one of them and someone else.
I had to stop in to see what, what's going on, because I had to go over there, period.
Right, you all seem to have the equipment in your hands, so.
So what's, so if they had equipment in their hands, they were working instead of steering.
They were in the parking lot. Beth, don't try to defend him. They were in the parking lot.
No, no, the story's changing, so.
The story's not changing. I said, two people were standing there, one guy was working.
For what period of time was there any exchange going on? You know, you can take a snapshot in time at any moment.
Yeah, that's right.
For example, he was, he was stopping in to verify that the work was getting done to standard. He's a supervisor.
Yeah, we can, we, you know what? You can do the propaganda, but you know what? I wanna know why we got two, three guys cutting grass, is my question.
Because there's two, three guys worth of work if those people are not full-time.
So, so we were supposed to have one guy, one guy cutting grass, Beth.
Yes, but if you have, if you have people that are doing work off programs, they've been helping with the work.
That's fine, but not other people full-time from the highway department.
So it's not, so basically, we have the budget, we have the work to do. It's up to the highway superintendent how to assign his people in order to get the work done and to prioritize it. That's not.
Okay, just bear this in mind, on the, we have six months. So when the seasonal worker started, back in the.
They're all done in November.
In six months. Okay, we'll just make.
You have, know what you have as a budget.
And the budget, yes. We have X number of dollars.
If it's spent in three months or it's spent in six months, it stops getting spent when the funding is spent.
That's correct.
That's the way that it works.
Right, if, if it works properly, and you know it's not gonna work that way, Beth.
Well, I don't know that.
I do want past experiences.
No, because actually, I want to talk to you about this issue in the past.
All right, I made, all right, I made my point. I made my point.
Okay, what's the next one?
Okay. I'd like to know why you didn't reappoint the secretary on the advisory board.
She didn't put in for.
As far as I know, she did. She told me she did.
I didn't, I didn't see anything.
She wanted to be on.
There was an appointment slipped there for her.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I didn't see that she had put in a letter to reappoint her.
No, I don't really remember what she put in a letter either, but I know that.
She put in the letter.
She put it in, I didn't see any letter that they.
So no one, no one.
I don't recall either, but I will look it up.
Look it up.
We're gonna look up, I mean, she put it in?
I'm gonna look up in emails, see if she sent me an email. Because I usually attach everything.
We had a lot, we had a lot of different people this year that put in to be on the advisory board, and we appointed a lot of different people. We thought some new blood on the advisory board would be good.
Okay, that's my point. But now you have a whole advisory board and there's only one person that knows anything. Beth's in there trying to, trying to show them what, what a municipal transfer is. No one knows anything now.
No, actually, I was in there making sure we standardized the information that was going out to the advisory.
Well, we have two members.
You were in, I was in there, you were in there explaining to them what a municipal transfer was. So don't try to keep putting this propaganda and trying to explain things.
There's nothing wrong with that for the new people.
No, that's good, but.
Because Beth had served on the board once before, and we do have two members on the board that are veteran board members.
You have one person on the board that has experience. The other two that are trying to be chairman only showed up 50% of the time. So what I'm trying to say is, you have an advisory board now with very little knowledge, so it's pretty much the way you want it, because then you can, they'll do what you want. And that's not the idea of the advisory board.
Dave, it's not that way at all.
Okay.
These people come, a lot of them come from the financial world, and they, and they've been, one, I think one is, was a retired accountant.
Yeah.
And I know some other people have some banking industry, and they've got.
A lot of skills that we haven't seen in a long time. Y'all have a former selectman that knows what a municipal transfer is. It's just in order to make sure, I don't want the full burden of getting.
No, but I'm just saying, right. So, that's why I'm just, my whole point is, that's all good, everything, that's good. And, and that's great for the town. But when you have, you have a good secretary who was very dependable, not, not reappointed, and you got hardly anyone that has any knowledge on the board, that's my point I'm trying to make.
We do have one woman that's on the board, she's been on for many, many years.
On the advisory board?
Yeah, and she has a lot of history in this town.
Okay, that's good, but I'm just saying, from what has been taking place, there's no one but one person right now that knows what's going on.
We have this three, five.
Don't, don't frown, Beth, I mean, they're all new, you just said that.
There's three former members on the board.
Right.
Right, so you've got, you've got Barbara Wilson.
But she's not there. Barbara's not, Barbara won't be there.
Well, she said that she planned on being.
Bob Barnes is the only one, and then you have two other people, three other people.
So you've got Bob Falter, who's, who's been on, who understands what's going on for two years now. We've got Bobby Marks, who's been on for many years.
Okay, why are you explaining what municipal transfers were, then?
Because we did have at least two brand-new people in the room. And sometimes people's understanding is a little bit different from going back to the book. And I'm a big fan of going back to the book and specifically, you know, taking, taking it straight out of the municipal finance booklet. Sometimes people start to say, well, this is what we do, and this is how we've always done it, instead of saying, this is what the state law says, and this is what we ought to be following for a procedure. It used to drive me absolutely batty while I was on the advisory, that people had their own perception of what we've done in Brookfield and not necessarily what state law dictates.
So then there's the other former members.
So one way to improve the communication is to have a selectman attend, and for the people who want the information, like the brand-new people, to do a real short bullet of training each meeting in order to say, hey, this is what's right in front of us, here's what the calendar ought to look like, here's what the next activities are for the state.
I don't need, I don't need a lesson on, on all that, Beth. I just asked a question.
Well, you're one of the people that tends to contribute to that drift of, this is the way I expect it to be.
No, that's, no, it's just, it is, a municipal transfer is a municipal transfer. It's not what you wanna make it.
So it was a, it was a five-minute introduction to it.
And you should've had someone in, one of the former members explain it. Because they can relate to, to the other members that are there.
Okay, all right, we'll take that and then.
Yeah.
Okay, what else do we have?
What's, what's going on with Friday now? You close Fridays, the town hall?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay, how are people, how, we're gonna go back like two, three years ago, we had that assistant treasurer, assistant secretary, how she, she didn't even, she got a free eight hours every, every week. How are the people gonna be working their hours that do work on Fridays?
Well, I decided that originally it was a choice whether to work at home or put me out. I decided last week that what I'm going to, what I've been doing this week is I have a schedule so that I'm putting in all the 40 hours between Monday and Thursday, and then I'll just take Friday off. Then there won't be any controversy whether I'm working on Fridays and, and on the off time, I'm gonna come in early in the morning, when the town halls are reopened, so we're not wasting electricity, I'm gonna work on my minutes then, and I'm gonna stay late Wednesday night and stay till 5:00 the other nights, and, and late Wednesday night, and work on my minutes then, so it's not interfering with anything.
That's good, because working at home doesn't work.
Well, plus, I don't wanna have to be able to have people think I'm not working.
Well, that's what happened a few years back, right.
So I wanna put the hours in, I wanna be transparent.
That's what happened a few years back.
And I think some of the other ones have changed their hours too. But say if somebody wants, decides that they wanna come in here on a Friday and do some work, they're allowed, you know, they're allowed to come in and do it, because a lot of time, our former DC treasurer, she used to be in here all day on Friday, working with catch-up. And I mean, the town hall would be locked, because what would be, what.
For safety reasons, right.
Yes, and what happens when Karen was here on Fridays, a lot of time, people would come in and they'd wanna, you know, pay these bills and, you know, different bills like this, and they want to say something from the town clerk, and Karen couldn't help them out, so they would leave very frustrated. So we thought the best thing to do was to close the town hall on Fridays.
Okay, so, so the people that have currently been working Fridays, they're not gonna be working from home, right? Because that's a bad practice. We've got into that years ago.
They're not working from home.
They're gonna make their hours up.
They'll, yeah, well, what do you mean, who make their hours up?
Well, whoever's, like, the treasurer used to come in on Fridays, and Karen used to come in, the tax collector used to come in.
She's going, she's extending her hours, is she?
She, well, she has been.
She has been.
She's been working till 5:00 every night, so she's already.
And then Wednesday, Wednesday she's here till 8:00, right?
And she's here till 8:00.
8 o'clock on Wednesdays.
So it's really just when the treasurer comes in.
Yeah, the treasurer, and if the treasurer wants to come in on a Friday and, you know, lock all the doors, she can come in, she can come in on a Friday.
Okay, but, okay, so I guess my point is, the practice is, we're not gonna be working from home, because that don't work, and it doesn't happen.
No, he's gonna be working from home.
Okay, because we're just going backwards now. Okay, all right. Thanks for the discussion.
Does anyone else have anything for commentations? Mr. Taylor?
Good evening. I only have two things. The first one is in reference to the South Pond beach. The floats aren't out. And it's been pretty heavily used, and I thought that the floats were supposed to be out.
I thought the recreation committee usually put the float.
And just, the last time I saw them, they, they laid on the beach all, all winter, so I don't even know what kind of condition they're in.
Drew, you're usually, what, by July 4th?
It's supposed to be after, what is it, the week after Memorial Day or whatever.
The week after Memorial, because I know that they usually.
Yeah.
Send a note to Jeff.
Yeah, well, send a note to Jeff.
Just, just double-check and see if they have that in, on their agenda. The other thing is, and I can either talk about it now or I can wait until you get to capital planning, and that's in reference to the water department's vehicle. Seeing as there was kind of an issue with the fire department vehicle, I just wanna be sure what I need to do, what the water commission needs to do in order to purchase the vehicle.
Is that procedure book, is the procedure forms updated for the capital?
We haven't put the forms in yet, but Kerry has the latest forms.
Kerry has the latest one.
Kerry does? Okay.
Go in and see Kerry and.
Okay, it's not that it's gonna happen, you know, immediately anyway, I just wanna be sure that, okay, all right, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, we're seeing that we don't have, wasn't Kermit gonna come in?
I left a message for him, because he didn't answer the phone, so I don't know if we got it, asking him to come in early if he can, obviously he can get it or anything.
Well, why don't we move on to the signing of the human resources grant from the community compact? And I'd like to entertain a motion for the chairman to sign.
You have the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Great to get it going.
Now, we had, have we shared with everybody what that's gonna constitute?
If you wanna check the scope of work is in that, you can wait.
Okay. If Mr. Snyder would like to read this, he can.
If you would like me to.
If you don't mind my line.
Is that, no, that's not, it's in the very end.
Oh, the scope is, that is the scope.
Is that the scope of work?
Yeah, and here's, and here's.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's.
Oh, maybe this is the better one. Scope of work of the HR consultant, again, this is a community compact, so it's money that can come to us from the state to improve efficiencies within the town, and a human resource consultant is responsible for providing a high level of support and implementation and administration of a human resource program, project, or policies. The consultant's main role will be to establish an official HR policy, with the town of Brookfield to assist in the creation of a personnel handbook. In addition, the consultant is expected to undertake a variety of HR duties, which include but are not limited to offering advice and recommendations regarding HR matters, formulating practical, uh, practical plans to address HR issues, and to present training sessions on complex HR policies and procedures. Step forward. Because with Kermit, I thought earlier he said he was gonna be here.
If he doesn't make it, I have a copy of the information that he was going to cover with us, actually electronically.
Well, he's on the agenda after.
Right, so if he, if he doesn't show up by the end of the meeting, I can at least share the, of the information that was, it was part of a, a small working group meeting within the CIPC.
When we move on, we'll do a municipal transfer. Okay, this is from the water department, from the water superintendent, James Booth. The amount of the transfer is $1,117.91, and it's going to come from the water casual labor account, and it's going into the water superintendent's account.
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was something, I, I wrote floral in case I received it more, because I'm in one.
These are some appointments, and I would like to make a, entertain a motion to do the appointments of Stephen Parasol, as he's gonna be on the board of directors for the dispatch overseers.
I know your appointment, I thought it was gonna be a rundown, but he didn't mind, and Steve did want it, so we switched it over to the, the bylaw committee.
And now, this is the assistant, we have an assistant animal control officer, and his name is Sidney Plant, and he is, oh, it's a girl, Sidney Plant, okay. And we have appointments to the bylaw committee, James Cook, Barbara Wilson, Robert Barnes, and Harriet Pearson, and Terrell Brown. So I'd like to entertain a motion to appoint these, would I have one more?
You have that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A quick question about the bylaw committee, because they haven't been terribly active in the past. Are there any particular areas that we'd like to at least actively communicate or charge them with looking at between now and the special town meeting?
There is a charge, there is a charge for them.
Right.
Out there, and they can just, like, if anybody comes forward, you know, like the bylaw, you know, they usually come to them and they review it, and then they decide if they wanna have, you know, put it on a meeting. And did, do we wanna have them review the one we had on the, for the advisory board? We should probably have.
We should do that.
Yeah, we should have them review that one.
The, the other, probably important one is back to the HR stuff, is we have bylaws that are related to HR that need to be modified.
Modified.
Especially if we're gonna have a working procedure.
Right.
So I think that if there's a priority there, as this HR thing kicks off, that would be probably about number one, for me, anyway.
So we may wanna let them know that that's coming, have a conversation with them, let them know that that's coming down.
Yep.
Now I would like to entertain a motion to sign a summary deed.
You have that motion.
Second.
I'll call Mr. Cook and ask him to start reviewing the HR bylaw.
Just to hit more heads up.
Okay. And we can go on to, we wanna finish it up. You have anything on to other?
I did have one thing. Found a couple of flammable cabinets, secondary market, from a secondary market vendor, 60-gallon capacity. They look like they would meet the needs of the highway department. We can get two of them for $1,000, which is about, yeah, it's a lot less than new. They'd be like $900 each, these are $500 each picked up. We do have to send somebody out to Rainham to go pick them up. Highway superintendent said he was on board with it.
Now, where are these coming from?
They're coming from Rainham, Mass. It's a place called, I think it's, look at the, the company. It's, I think it's American Material Handling Corp. or something like that. They, they specialize in used warehouse equipment. There's somebody that's been in the past, they usually have real quality stuff.
Yes.
And so, they happen to have some come in that are, like, good size, good condition, so I just wanted to, I, I wanted to ask for a motion to go ahead and allow the treasurer to cut a check, or the accountant to, to accept it off of the bid and cut a check against the bid, so that they could actually hand-carry a check when they go pick them up.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. So that way we can get the, all the math and accounting done in advance, and we'll be able to get those, so. And then I was gonna just double-check if, I sent just a preliminary inquiry to Sturbridge, because I had heard that they finally had a facility for, for holding stray animals, and it had been an issue that was raised by the folks who were filling in when our ACO was off, was that we don't currently have a facility, and none of the surrounding communities do. Sturbridge is that they are at least willing to discuss what kind of terms or conditions they would have.
I talked to, I talked to the town manager today, and he called up.
Yeah.
And he said, I guess the one that handles the water that down there also, is he's the chief of police.
Okay.
Tom Ford.
Ford, sure.
He does it.
Oh, wow.
So he's, yeah, so he said he would be willing to sit down, he said he, Karen, Karen and I, and I said also, probably the animal control office. Sarah, we'll discuss that possibility. Because he said they could probably work with us until we get one.
Until we get one, right, exactly. And Sarah was pretty excited to hear that anybody had one, so.
So we'll have to, we can probably set something up then to get together with him.
That is great. So did you wanna take point on negotiating?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go there. Karen and I, Karen can take some time, because he said, you know, we all wanna come down and talk.
So that, that says that West Brookfield, the idea of them adding on is a bad idea. It's not gonna happen.
And then I, and I don't think that they want that, they don't want anything done with, don't want all the land still. They don't want anything down.
I don't know, there were a couple of other sites that, that we considered, or at least that we were talking about. Is there any opportunity on any other property in town besides the transfer station?
Wherever you, wherever we put it, we have to have, I think you have water, electricity, and then, because in the summer you have to have air conditioning, and winter it has to be heated, so I don't know if it's anyplace, we'd have to run lines to all this room.
Actually, they have, they have.
That's where I was gonna say something.
I'm sorry. They, they have prefab buildings that if you just can run power and water to them, that you can get, that, that meet all of the state requirements. But we have to figure out what kind of traffic it would have.
But then we have to find out what a point, so it's not gonna bother people.
Well, I think the regional perspective is best.
Yeah.
If, if we can have a regional response, that would be best for all of us.
Was, was Westbrookfield looking at establishing one?
No, that over at Westbrookfield had spots, and we have used them in the past.
Right.
And the question, and the question was, were they interested in adding on, because it was based on capacity? And so if they were interested to add on, that might be a way to fill those counts. So that was that idea.
But if Sturbridge was willing to help us out, you know, I think it's worth to go down and talk to them about it.
Well, and I think it stressed the whole nature of the regional response, because we do need to do something.
Okay, Suzanne and Kermit is here.
Yeah, she's in.
Kermit, can you have your discussion with us in three minutes, because we have the bid opening? Or do you wanna wait? We have the bid openings for the bridge, so can you do your discussion in three minutes?
Or we start it, Scott?
We can, we can actually, we can, we can start, we. We can actually, we can start, we have a bid opening. We just can start beforehand.
It's 7:01 already. We've got, we've got to do, we looked up the protocol for.
Oh, okay.
All right. Okay. I'd like to entertain, entertain a motion to open the bid openings at 7:01.
You have that motion.
Second.
We see two bids came down, because I think it was a couple of weeks ago, we had three people that came in. That's right, because I had come in.
Are those two bids from, any of the people who were here?
What, Sidney?
Are the two bids from people?
Yes, the people, yeah, there are two people that were here.
So I think, don't we appropriate that the highway superintendent and administrator come forward and assist us?
Yeah, you can assist us. I'll open them, and you can look them over too, and see what you think. This one is from Northern Construction Service. They're from 7th, 75 Pleasant Street, Unit 11, from Wayman, Mass. Okay, their total bid is $271,700. And this one is from New England Infrastructure Incorporated at 13 Brent Drive, Holy Mass. And their total bid is, we have $32,200.
They're paying by the, charging by the amount.
And then I had talked this morning to, Michael, I talked to Michael So, Sozen this morning, the engineer, and he said that we can send him copies of those, and he'll look them over, and he'll advise them.
So that's the activity now, is to analyze these.
Analyze them. It just has to go.
Do you all want copies of them before they go to the engineer, or?
We need the originals.
Yeah, they need originals. He said he wanted copies. That's what he told me. Does he want the original?
I don't.
No, no.
No, he wants.
We need to keep sure.
He wants copies of them, copies of them. So I would like a motion to take the bids under advisement, and accept submitted bids, and take them under advisement.
You have that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. So now, given that we have them in hand, is there any action that we need to take tonight, as you do the analysis?
No, because we gotta take and go over all of them, and make sure everything's in line and stuff.
So we have the funding available to?
We're gonna have to request some Chapter 90 money to complete the project. And I got a project request here. We'll just have to, we're gonna get this to Mike and make sure which ones we're gonna go with and everything. And then we'll have to get the project request filled in the rest of the way for the difference with 15% on top of that, because that's how the state wants it done.
So we have to match it with 15% of?
No, no, no. When you do a project request with Chapter 90 money on a roadwork project, we need 15% on top of what the project approximately would cost.
15% of safety factors, so that you know you have the funds available in case it runs over.
So the 15%, does that come from the town?
No, that's, that's just all Chapter 90.
It's all Chapter 90, okay.
So would it be appropriate to have a discussion on Chapter 90 money tonight?
We can, if you want, if we have time. But you may wanna close the bid opening right now.
Yeah, I'd like a motion to close the bid.
You have that motion.
Second.
Any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna say 7:06.
Yes, 7:06.
So you're gonna get that over to the engineer, is that what you said?
Yeah, we'll make copies of it tomorrow, and stuff, here at the town hall, and we'll get it mailed out overnight, so we'll get it done.
Thank you, spare coffee, just for curiosity and education.
Sure. So really, it's the status of, of Chapter 90 monies, and what those major projects are, especially with a capital improvement person sitting in the audience that might be interested to understand where we are with different chapter funding.
Coffee, freezer?
Can I make a suggestion? That microphone works good. At that time, hearing you, even sitting in the front row, hearing you does. I don't know if there's a way that we could increase that volume at all.
Excuse me, Karen, these are not amplification mics. They're for the camera.
I'm sorry?
These mics are not for amplification. They're for the camera.
Okay. So you're just, there's no amplification?
So we'll just have to speak up a little louder.
Thank you. This is your question, please.
Okay, so do we have any rough estimates on the material portion for the plan for summer 2017?
For this summer 2017?
Yep.
We are doing the crack seal and microseal on the roads up here in the center of town. That's a, we did a project request of.
Can I ask a question before we get started? So you're at, how much funding that's available to us on the Chapter 90?
This year, it's right around 560, I wanna say, 550.
So we've accrued $550,000?
Yes.
That we have available. Now, does that include the bridge or not?
No.
No. So the bridge is separate money that we can request?
Yes.
Okay. So that we're in excess of the 550?
Yes.
Okay.
And we, we did a project request earlier this year to do these streets in the center of town, try to save them a little bit longer. That's 150. That's on the books right now, out of the 550.
Out of the 550. So you're above $400,000 that you have available to you?
Exactly.
And then, then with that $400,000, then you, you start working the crack seal, oversee the Denbrook Bridge now. What, is that, I'm confused now. Just help me.
On, right now, on Chapter, Chapter 90, that's available to the town of Brookfield, we, we get $550,000, all right? Out of that 550, 150 of it is to the streets here in the center of town, to try to preserve these streets a little longer. All right, so you take the 550 minus the 150, we're down to 400, call it. Once we figure out what we're doing with the, the bids here from the bridge, we're gonna have to do a project request of the difference to take and use Chapter 90 money to get the bridge completed and stuff. So we're looking at probably another 150,000 or so out of Chapter 90 money. I'm guessing.
So they get you back to the three, three?
Yeah, roughly. Be two something, about 250.
Two something.
And we already appropriated 250,000 to the week for?
No. It was only 125 or something.
Was it?
Yeah.
And we're down under $100,000.
Yeah, about 95 now.
But that was the pre-engineering stuff?
Correct.
All right.
Okay. So given that, if we then come to Sommeel Bridge and the catch basin stuff, how far do we end to that 300?
The bridge and Chapter 90, the bridge and the catch basins, we won't use any of the Chapter 90 money. That's all town funds and stuff. That's already there.
So, so then it really does say that the idea of replacing the loader is the next thing on the list?
That's correct.
Is that something we should be thinking about tonight, or?
Well, we need to look at it somewhere down the line. There is no question about it.
Okay.
And I see you're thinking about leasing the vehicle for three years.
That's the, we've done that before with the highway department, do a lease purchase on the equipment. That way, we're not tying up a whole years of Chapter 90. We're only tying up a portion of it.
So a question on, now, we're not talking FY18 yet, so you're, you would be expecting FY18 money as well?
Yes.
And what kind of money are we talking for FY18?
Probably somewhere, again, probably around 150 on Chapter 90.
So this is still FY17 money?
Yes.
Oh.
So come next, next April, we'll, we'll receive more money from the state and everything else, about, approximately 150.
Good. So if any surprises were to come up, we've got a cushion?
That's correct.
Even if we were to go off and do the loader?
Right.
Excellent.
Good.
Thank you.
Is there any possibility that, I, I don't like doing it this way, but get you guys to sign the project request for that, the bridge, so once we figure out what's going on, we can get that paperwork filled out, and get it to the state ASAP?
I make a motion that we sign.
There is, needs to be two originals there.
I'm sorry?
There's two copies, but they have to be both the original.
Who needs to sign? All three?
So we need to make a motion to have the chairperson?
Chairperson.
But you all three need to sign the environmental punch list, which is the third page.
The third page.
So let's make a motion that we sign the?
I'll second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes.
What are you gonna do for 150,000 on the roads around town, up down here? What's 150,000 gonna be used for?
Read the paper, Dave.
I'm asking a question here now, tonight. We have townspeople on the campus.
The townspeople are aware about it, sir.
I'll read it. The crack and seal, micro surface portions of the following streets: River Street, Compton Street, Central Street, Lower River, Howard Street, Lincoln Street, Lincoln Street Extension, Sherman Street, and Pleasant Street.
And that's gonna be crack sealed?
Crack sealed and micro surface portions of the following streets.
For 150,000? Sounds like a lot to me.
150,000?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you said 400,000.
No, 150,000. Just to me, that sounds like a lot.
Well, I know you've got a lot of experience in doing that type of work, Dave. That's why I rely on people that have the experience that I call out, and have them, give me a quote on it, before we go out for bids.
Thank you for that. Next comment.
Thank you for joining us.
Yes, very much so. It's very, it's very useful. It'll be a useful tool for the CIPC as well. If you, if you have at least some rough estimates for the future plan portion, you know, where, you know, this is like about 150?
Yeah, the thing is, is you.
Some of this you might not know till you get into.
While closer to that time to do it and stuff, you know, within six or eight months, you'll have a better estimated cost.
Right. If you could ballpark it today dollars, though, it does at least help from a standpoint of, of just from a municipal planning perspective.
Let's make sure we sound the right way.
Okay. Do I sign under?
Yeah, it's something.
Yeah, and it doesn't have to be perfect, and no one's gonna come back and say, gee, you gave this estimate in 2017, and I'll say it to the camera, so that you know I'm honest about it. It's not gonna come back and say, hey, you said in 2017, now it's 2019, and it's 10% higher. Someone's gonna get.
It happens, you know, price of oil and stuff, things change when you're doing road work.
Or you get the engineer out there to do the plan, and it turns out it's a bigger project than what you originally thought it was. But from a standpoint of the municipal planning, it's important for them to at least have like kind of at least a rough ballpark.
Right.
You know, likewise, that's a fair number of miles of road, actually, for the inside of town, with it being, you know, inclusive of all of those streets. So it's pretty easy to see where you get that number.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. But if you could.
You know, some, some people think, you know, you name off those streets here and everything else, they go, well, that ain't very much. Well.
Actually, when you do the road miles.
If you do the road miles, it's a lot.
Yeah. Well, do you know what the road miles is when you consider all those streets about?
It was about 20, between 25 and 27,000 feet. So it's about 5,000 per, 50, 200 to a mile.
So it's about five miles.
Five miles worth of road work.
Yeah.
So that's where people get too.
Aggressive and figuring that if you go for, go on cheap.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thanks for the math.
We also have the state salt bid, which needs to be signed.
Oh, okay.
We need another motion to sign some.
So this is, I'll make a motion that we sign the state salt bid, because you, basically, we get the best price by going with the state price.
Oh, no, we, okay, I'll make that motion.
One second. Anything else highway tonight?
Right at the moment, no, I guess. Don't you wanna sign a no project request, but that's besides the point. I think people wanna talk about it.
People probably wanna talk about it.
Yeah. When's the next meeting that we can discuss that?
Yeah, we're meeting on the 25th again.
Is that okay from a project planning perspective?
If, is there any other people that have to be involved with it? That wanna discuss?
I would think not.
Right.
We're talking the bridge, right?
No, the, you said something about the loader at the time.
Oh, oh.
To discuss that down the line.
Yeah, well, yeah, we wanted, I would think we would wanna do that if it's not the next meeting, a meeting soon after.
Yes, soon after.
There's a meeting of the CIPC on the 19th. If you could provide the information about what you're gonna be doing with the loader too, or what your goal is to do with the loader to CIPC as well. So just review the requests. That would be important, that we start routing stuff through them as well, so they understand what's going on with the fleet and what the need is, and what your recommendations for funding are.
Okay.
By August first, or anywhere timeline, we're gonna go to all departments and give, have them give us current information about capital expenditures for FY18 and FY19. Just to, we've got a very detailed timeline, and we'll be working with those people. So by August first, we'll be sending out a letter to all the departments, including, we'll have designated liaison, one or two liaison people working with the different departments to work that, as we have in the past, and it's worked fine, and hopefully it'll continue to work that way.
Right.
Kermit, do, we have to start our class two license at 7:30, so can you have your little discussion done by then? Yes, I said.
Come on up here, Kermit, so he can hear us.
I got bad air, I mean.
We're gonna discuss with us the capital expenditures for FY18.
Yeah, just a very quick update. CIPC had just a couple of meetings, and subsequent to that, we've identified what our mission responsibilities are, a timeline to get things done, and how we're gonna work with the departments. And we'll be getting that information out to the select board. Again, we have a meeting on the 19th, and we're gonna be talking about that. What the request tonight that I have is, are there any capital expenditures from the select board's account that will be on the town, fall town meeting?
I think the only thought was this building. And again, it's.
Was the furnace approved last year? The furnace, the expenditures for the furnace?
Funding, yeah. That came out of last year's.
Okay, so that, so, okay.
Or was allocated out of last year's funds.
So that's not, so there won't be anything coming up at the fall meeting?
Well, the fall meeting might be the stair lift.
Yeah, I was just gonna bring that up. Yeah, the stair lift, if we bring that up.
Let me, let me bring you up, up to date on the chair lift. We've met with Bill Simpson, and I've contacted the AAB board, and based on what they're, they've told me verbally, and I don't wanna take this as gospel, but it sounds like perhaps an inclined, inclined chair lift may be okay, and may be okay and not require an elevator for the town hall. I passed it back to Bill, and his committee is going to investigate further. I thought, I think it's their responsibility to look at that. And I know Mr. Holcraft has talked about that, but an inclined chairlift may not require AAB approval even, or ADA approval. They said that they would get involved if there was other construction work going on at the time. But I don't want to take that, again, I don't want to take that as gospel. Here's the verbal conversation, so. Bill Simpson's committee is going to take the lead on that project. So, that's that on that. If there's any questions about that?
Kermit's.
Kermit, do you have one?
Did that furnace ever get fixed when this passed what the?
No. Okay. The, the funding was set aside, but it's not done yet.
Now, has Mr., has Bill Simpson, we haven't appointed a committee yet for him, have we?
We did.
We did.
We did. Two meetings ago when he was out of town, and they're just now scheduling.
Was that the one I?
Yeah, you missed that.
Okay, I missed that one. Okay, all right.
Yeah, so he's charged.
So, he's got the charge and he's got.
He's got the charge. They just have to schedule, basically, they need to schedule their first meeting and get it organized.
How many members was, oh, we got five members.
They, they did say that putting an inclined chairlift would require approval by the building, Jeff Taylor's office, and may require some sort of a variance, but once he gets past that variance, as I understand it, we're, we're clear. But again.
He did all of it in writing.
Absolutely.
Because what they say depends on who you get from the board, by the way.
Yeah, well, yeah, there's only two members now. One, one has resigned, so there's only two people on the AAB board right now. So, we got to get it in writing. So, again, I pass the burden back to the committee. That's their responsibility.
And if we can get approval to do that, that would be, that would be wonderful. I mean, we're saving a lot of money.
Yeah, if that, if that could happen.
And we could, and we could start forward with some of the.
Yes, absolutely.
Once we can get access.
Yeah. Anything else?
That's it. Anything, anything else more from your committee you'd like to report?
Uh, no, again, we will be back with the department heads to select board, the advisory committee, and we've identified what we think our responsibilities are, our mission is, and a timeline to get things done. And we'll be approving that at, hopefully, our 19th, meeting on the 19th, and get that out to everybody.
So, what we would also like to do, and we've talked about it, is in the financial policy routines, to add your charge, your idea of what you're going to be doing in that book, so it's very clear to everyone as far as what your activities are and how it impacts the financial.
Good.
So, I appreciate what you're doing.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you.
We've still got a few more minutes, so we'll move on to our correspondence. We have some correspondence from Chata Communications. This is Dear Municipal Officials, this letter gives notice that the following changes will be made to your channel lineup. Universal HD will cease transmission of this channel on all service levels on or about July 14, 2017. The Olympic Channel will be launched on SSP Tier 1, which is silver level of service, and SD and HD on or about July 14, 2017. For a complete lineup, visit spectrum.com channels. To view this online, visit spectrum.net programming notices. If you have any questions, you can reach annalucy@chata.com, or you can call her at 774-243-9735. And then, we, now we have one from Joseph Leverera Sr. of 10, Kate Avenue. He would like to do some metal detecting on the common if I can. I would donate any relics I find to the town as part of its history. I can be reached at email at levererasr@hotmail.com, or by phone at 508-867-9508 for any other questions. Thank you. I'm seeing problem at hotmail.com.
I'm just curious of, of past practice.
I, yes, I think.
And his award didn't, they said, no.
Oh, they didn't.
No, they didn't.
But I know there have been people, I've seen them all over town, what they're doing now.
I'm sure.
I'd say so long as he, I'm wondering if, if we require some nominal bond from him to make sure he doesn't do any turf damage in the case of trying to recover any artifacts.
I, I, I want to refer back to the, the manager committee is still in place, right?
I don't think.
I don't think they'll pay for it because they, they have been active for so long.
Isn't that, isn't there a bylaw on that? Isn't there a bylaw about no metal detecting on the common? It's been no for years. No, 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 that's what you all said.
Always been no? I don't think, I don't know if it's.
I don't think there's a bylaw.
No, I don't think there's a bylaw.
I don't remember reading it, but I can check.
I don't ever remember.
I don't think there's a bylaw.
No, someone requested it years ago, and you don't turn it down.
And they've always been turned down. Okay. No, it's no bylaw, right? As I've read, I've read through them many times. There's no bylaw.
I was going to say, not to, to mess my knowledge, there's nothing in there specific to metal detecting on town.
If it's never been allowed before, then I'll say that, you know, we're not going to allow it this time. So, Karen, if you just wanted to, you know, give him a note, write it back to town. Okay, that's, that's it. We've got, let's see, what do we have here for time? Three more minutes, or can we open it up? We want to wait to see if any more of butters arrive?
Yeah, we do, we do. Yeah, we have to wait on that.
We got three more minutes. Okay. Does the gentleman who is going to be operating, Brookfield Auto, is he here?
I am here on his behalf. He is not here.
Okay, would you like to come up and sit, please?
He actually requested that if there was something else on the agenda, if we could attend to that first. He, he's running by.
I didn't hear you, sir. He's running.
He's requesting if there's something else on the agenda, and he may be.
Do you want to recess for 10 minutes?
Yeah. Or can I do another and sit on the other side? Is it too late to do that?
Another, what are we?
I'd like to bring up our problem on Quaybuck Street.
Oh.
Okay, I'll come over here.
Go for it. We're back to Quaybuck Street now.
All right. I'd like to bring up the racetrack at 5 Quaybuck Street. It's, he says it's practice sessions down there, but he's going all day long. There's no hours set for them to be down there. I've called the environmental police, and they, they take your name and number, and they say, we'll get back to you. And it's just an all-day thing that goes on until 8 o'clock at night, and it doesn't stop. And it, and Sundays, you can hear the noise in the house, and I mean, I know we're going back to court with them on July 26th about this, but I mean, he's running a business down there. He doesn't have any permits, from what I understand, and I don't think he should be down there doing that. And he's disturbing a lot of people. More people have been stepping up than when we originally had this.
So, the only thing that I understood from when we went around on this the last time is from an enforcement perspective, it was noise, and that there are certain criteria of off-road vehicles that are required by Mass General Law, that 96 DBA of a new bike, 108 by old bike, but that, that the environmental police were, are to enforce that noise level. So, do we have any further information on noise level?
My husband has been keeping a chat.
So, we, so we have a log of?
Yeah, he's been keeping, yeah, he has been.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it just seems you call the environmental police, and I did happen to find somebody, it was a week ago this past Sunday, and she did answer, and she said she would have somebody check it out, and she would have them call me back, and I didn't hear anything at all from them. And he was even, he, one thing I can say, he was courteous on 4th of July. He wasn't up there on the 4th. But I mean, he's at Saturdays, Sundays, it goes on all the time. And I think, I think it should be checked out. I mean, he's, he's been advertising on his website, he's charging for these people who come down there and practice, so he is running a business. And then he also has showroom. You can, he's had that on, that's been online too. He's got a showroom where he sells the bikes. He sells dirt bikes down there. He has also the, the suits that you have to wear, the helmets, the whole works.
So, as a, as a vendor in town, and I, forgive me for not being familiar with, with our own bylaws regarding that, do they need any type of vendor license?
Yeah, he's got to get some permits. He should come up. I don't even know if he's registered his businesses, his business here with the town.
And that'd be registered with the town clerk?
With the town clerk.
So, and you had.
On the original order of conditions of the conservation commission with the DEP, there was supposed to be a noise barrier. It's like a 10 to 12 foot wall.
He never put one up and put, he did some kind of a six-foot wall down there, but I think that was just to keep the banking up. That's all he did.
And I was wondering about that, because I know that noise barriers can be a part of it, but he hasn't installed it.
No, he has a six-foot one back, and what it does, it just holds the wall up. It's not actually a noise barrier.
Right.
And they've done nothing, no.
There's nothing down there.
I had DEP come down again, Judith Schmidt, can I look at it? Or nothing, remember? I said, well, it shouldn't be there. No, no, no. I have a question. Would you share what this, what was decided in court, Linda? That was a court decision from the town clerk. There was a court decision that it came down, and it was legal for it. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, it is legal.
It is legal, right?
But we're supposed to be going back to court to find out just what hours he's going to be allowed to do.
I didn't, I answered, wouldn't you should have, did the court, did the court know he put down?
We're going back to court with it, and we're, I don't know.
It's a determination of hours.
Determination of hours, what the hours are going to be.
Yeah, clarification on their original.
Yeah, we have to find out the clarifications of what's going on. But it's very aggravating. It bothers the, it travels over the water. It's bothering people that live up like Boys Avenue by us. It's coming down the whole lake area.
So, it's, it's noise.
It's noise.
And, and so I think, Linda, if you would like, if you could share your log with me, I will do the calculations that I did the, the first time, so that we can turn around and then forward them off to the local rep to put some pressure on environmental police to follow up.
Right, and I think maybe need to get with the zoning board.
I don't know if he would. I think Ann Goby would be better off because Mr., I mean, Representative Bertheum is a farm dirt bike rider. So, I don't know. So, I think we should go.
Go for both.
Well, but actually, we should go for both, because frankly, people who are responsible riders actually want people to be compliant so that there's less resistance against getting a ride. So, I'd say you, you, if you could, if you can convert, convince anybody to support it, sometimes it's just like responsible hunters. Responsible hunters don't like yahoos that go out there shooting people's dogs, you know?
So, if you, if you could, through the admin, give me a copy of the log.
Okay.
I'll do the calculations as I did the, the original set of logs, but, which proved that he was out of compliance. Absolutely was out of compliance, and that it's now time to go to the environmental police to say that here is now a log of these readings, and the, this is the, the calculation based on this, and it's suggesting that the vehicles are not in compliance, and have the environmental police, as they're charged to do, enforce the law.
Because I mean, we, we've been putting up with this since probably 1982. It's been a long time, and then they did, did have a brief period of time where they weren't there at all.
So, so do we have like basically three different levels of noncompliance? We have noncompliance on the noise.
Right.
We have noncompliance on offering stuff for sale on a premises that doesn't currently have a business license, once we verify that with the town clerk.
Yep.
Okay. And then it sounds like we have a noncompliance with zoning board of appeals conditions of operations with regards to putting up an appropriate noise barrier that conforms with the, the 10-foot requirement.
But that's, that's with Jeff though, isn't it? Building inspector? Yeah, for the, I think he had.
It's an order of conditions.
But it's an order of conditions from zoning board of appeals.
Oh, that's an order of condition from the order.
Yeah, so zoning board of appeals, so. So, I think Jeff would enforce it in some ways.
Yeah, Jeff would enforce it. He'd go down and look at it.
Or he'd verify that they.
Because he was the one that came back and said that it was only a six-foot wall, and that it was there just to keep, you know, the walls up. It wasn't a noise barrier.
Right.
And I know the zoning enforcement officer's been down there also.
So, at least, let's start out from the noise.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you.
I have a question, Madam Chairman. What?
Yes, but I'm sitting over here though as a private citizen. Mr.
All right, Clarence, what did the actual court say to the town of Brookfield about him operating down there?
Oh, that he was, that he, he's legal to operate.
Just for, but just for practice sessions, not races.
Say that we could have said, because we need due diligence the way we're supposed to from the hip, though. So, I think, I think what he's doing is legal.
He's only doing practice sessions. That's all he can do.
That's correct.
He is legal to operate in compliance to Mass General Law. What we've been chatting about here for a couple of years is that his riders are out of compliance.
You don't know that.
We have.
Well, we've got a log of.
We have a log of readings of the decibel levels on the street, calculating back to what should be a decibel. The readings that Linda originally received were in the 90s and low hundreds of decibels levels, so that we had that information when we first, the town bought a decibel meter. That's what the readings were. If you take 100 DBA and you move it back to the 20 inches that it's supposed to be measured at, that the bikes were running about 130 DBA. That's out of compliance.
I don't think that, I don't think that's accurate what you're saying, but that's okay.
That's fine. So, we.
Don't want to confuse you with the facts, Mr. Holcraft.
There's often facts. Well, Michael Rock, co-chair of the conservation, you know some of the other guys on the environmental police, and they went down there twice. They, he had them go down twice, and there was four guys down there, and half the kids that were running there were old enough to be under the lights. And it was like eight to 10 kids that haven't had, in Massachusetts, they have to have so many hours of riding, and none of them did, so he closed it down twice.
So, it's time for them to go back down.
Yeah, I think it is.
Yep.
Okay, well, thank you for hearing me out.
All right. How close are we now? Where is he en route?
I will have to check this.
Okay. Well, why don't we do a recess for?
Like five minutes.
Five minutes.
Check it out.
Now, make a motion to recess?
Yes, and I'll take a second, and we're recessed for the next five minutes.
Or so.
Or so.
We'd like to reconvene the meeting at 7:44 PM, and I would like to entertain a motion to open the Class 2 license hearing.
You have that motion?
Second.
Okay, we're going to have, it's a public hearing on Tuesday, July 11, 2017, for Class 2 license. It's Brookfield Auto LLC, 14 Post Road, Brookfield, Mass, 01506. In accordance with Massachusetts general law, please be advised, a public hearing will be held at 7:30, which it's not, it was 7:44, on Tuesday, July 11, 2017, in the banquet hall of the Brookfield Town Hall, 6 Central Street, Brookfield, Mass. This hearing is for the application for a Class 2 or seller's license by Brookfield Auto LLC, 14 Post Road, Brookfield, Massachusetts. And we have a representative here from Brookfield Auto, and if you'd like to introduce yourself.
My name is Boris Prosnikov, and I'm the owner of the LLC. Please.
Can, can you, we've seen that you've been doing a lot of work down there.
Yes.
And sprucing the place up, and so maybe you could tell us a little bit about, you know.
Well, basically, we did the renovations, you know, so the place looks nice, so it's accessible, you know, and basically to service the people around in surrounding areas, and, you know, I would like the facility to be nice. We did some paving in front. We can do a little more a little bit later, but for now, the building, which went through main systems of the building, make sure everything's working, you know, good working order, and that's basically it for now.
So, so you're going to have like all used autos, or you're going to have.
Yes, used.
Used autos?
Mm-hmm. Used only.
Are you going to be doing stippers?
Yes, but unfortunately, Massachusetts decided not to do anything until October. They're redoing the program. So, as soon as it's available, yes.
So, you're likely to be doing.
Yes.
Oh, that's good.
As soon as it's available.
Yeah, because we used to do, they used to do them down there at one time. That's good.
We would love to as soon as possible, but they closed the program until October 1st.
Okay. Would you like to say anything else about the business that you operate?
Well, we'd like to, you know, service everybody as best as we can, and we're going to have, you know, auto repair and auto body repair too. So, you know, hopefully, nobody needs it that much, but you never know.
Well, we welcome you to town in the new business. Okay, well, we welcome you to town in the new business. Okay, do we have any of the abutters that are here that would like to speak? Mr., Mr. Blais, would you like to speak?
Not much I want to say, I mean, from my, from my knowledge, none of the zonies, the zoning laws, the bylaws have ever been, not approached or talked about, so from what it sounds like to me, it's cut and dry. I mean, he's got, he's got the permit and the license to operate and there's not, there's, I have no clue.
Well, I mean, he hasn't got the license yet.
He hasn't got the license yet.
What we're doing, this is the hearing about it, and we asked any of the, he, he sent out notices to any of the abutters who were within three hundred feet of the property to come down here and voice their opinions.
Why would somebody go through the expensive, doing all the renovations if you hadn't even got a permit to, to work? And it's almost like it's, 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 it's cut and dry, it's almost like they've accepted.
We haven't accepted it, we haven't, we haven't even...
And, and get denied.
Well, we haven't even voted on this yet. This is, we're having a hearing, this is what the hearing's for tonight.
Well, it seems like I'm the only neighbor here from Maple Street. But from my point of view, as far as, I understand that you have a license to operate. I understand that, you know, it's business zone.
Well, he doesn't have it yet.
But the thing I have to, I have to caution, whether it's Brookfield Motors or what is the new recent, or, 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 the buyer, is that your lot adjoins a neighborhood, an adjacent neighborhood. It's a very quiet neighborhood. And I, for one, and the neighbors agree, but somehow they won't speak up. We kind of like it quiet, we like it neat. I mean, with Brookfield Motors, there's been a lot of debris, there's been a lot of construction going on, a lot of construction, which, which is very disturbing to the neighborhood. From my point, we're not right there on your fence. Matter of fact, one day last week, one of your, one of your employees, whoever you employed to do the construction, I'm sitting there and they're playing their music and I'm saying, wow. I mean, I'm forty percent deaf for anything. So I went over, I asked them to quiet down the music, and I says, I hope this is not going to be a, you know, a potential of what's going to happen in the future. It's probably being quiet, unnecessary noise, I, I don't know. I, I'm just not sure as likely what, what this entails. But I know from my point of view, as a, as a resident, adjacent to a quiet great street, we like it quiet.
I can assure you, it's going to be as quiet as any dealership operation or even quieter. And I like quiet too.
And if there's any unnecessary debris or whatever it is that's in the backyard, which we suggested, but it never went through, that they put up a privacy fence, so we're not subjected to the, you know, to...
We don't, we don't even plan on any debris. There shouldn't be any debris. There should be cars for sale, that's it.
Are you planning on using that car?
Yeah, but only for storage of the cars, nothing else.
Because I noticed that, you know, the gate has been closed for years. And I remember the other day you opened up the...
Yeah, just to make it work. You know, to oil it a little bit, you know, I, I like things to work if they're there, you know? I don't like them to be forgotten, so. But no, this, as far as the debris, there's not going to be any debris. Unless you consider cars debris, but they're just used cars, nothing else.
And you're, you're allowed to operate, you're going to use like eight to five, eight to six, eight to seven?
Uh, you know, it's for convenience of people, sometimes, you know, somebody's working, they might drop at six, seven. I mean, sometimes people after work, you know, they come and they want to take a look at cars, whatever. But it is not including a noise, I mean, you know, it's going to be in the showroom if anything. And, you know, if we have to show the car, I mean, you know, the only noise is going to be if you start the engine. I mean, that's just, you know, there's not going to be any, anything special going on. It's just vehicles that are stored there and, you know, whenever we need to take one out to show, that's the only noise.
What would your service hours be?
Service is probably going to be until six. Like I said, because of the convenience, you know, a lot of people are working, they can't make it, you know.
So what time would you open in the morning?
Eight.
Eight in the morning, okay.
I will see, if there's demand, we'll open early. You know, it depends. I mean, seven is a possibility, but we're not planning right now. Eight is more like it.
We're just waiting for the administrator's assistant to come back, because I saw her, she made a mistake on the date. So she'll be right back, so that we could sign.
So the, the question, and Roland's concern, neighbor's concern, was that there were a number of vehicles that were not in service, that were just left on the mech fence. And it was left there for a very long period of time.
I know.
And if those kinds of things could be...
I don't like it myself, but unfortunately, it's the owners' vehicles of the lot. So if that's of a concern of some sort, I mean, we put them in the back, and we try to keep them like, you know, together in the back, there's like three of them or whatever. But if it's ever a concern, I mean, I can talk to him and see if we can maybe remove them off the lot. I don't like them myself, but, you know, we're not the owners of the building.
If it's possible, that has been irritant to the neighbors for a very long time.
No problem, I can talk to him.
If, if that's something that could be addressed, that would be very helpful.
I just, you know, in the beginning stage, we didn't bother too much, but...
Understood.
You know, again, not even our vehicles, so. I would never keep something like this in there.
You understand that?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the Class II license for Brookfield Auto LLC, fourteen Post Road, Brookfield, Mass. For a used car dealer's license two to buy and sell secondhand motor vehicles. And this will expire on December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen.
I'd like that. I'll make that motion.
Yeah, a second.
Any discussion on this?
No.
In favor? Aye.
Better than a pretty lot, that's for sure.
Listen, it's going to look nice, you wish.
Please, you can wait, because we're going to give you a license, you can give the license to...
Oh, today?
Yep.
All right, thanks.
She's just going to run and make a quick copy and then she'll be right back. He's already paid his fee.
And he has all the requirements and you can look through his application.
Everything, I know you have everything.
He's wanting everything.
Yeah, go ahead.
Attorney.
The only thing is, like I say, it expires in December, we apply and check.
Yep, just make sure.
Just make sure he knows that.
So she may have a copy, do you want to do a motion to adjourn?
Yep, I'd like a motion, entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting at...
At seven fifty-four.
Seven fifty-four.
Second, Matt.
In favor?
Aye.